Meeting of the Sheffield Health Scrutiny Subcommittee, our first meeting of this municipal year. The meeting today is open to the public, so a warm welcome to all of you in attendance in the room or virtually online. My name is councillor Ruth Milsim, I'm the Chair of this Health Scrutiny Subcommittee. And before we go any further, I'm going to ask our support officer from Democratic Services, Joanne, to read the housekeeping arrangements for us.
Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is Tudor Square. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council has a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consented to be filmed and the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Joanne. So I'm going to ask members to introduce themselves and then officers to introduce themselves. And I would like to say, so we have got new members on the committee, so particular welcome to those new members. And we'll start with Sophie if you'd like to introduce yourself and we'll move round in this direction.
Morning, thank you Chair. Councillor Sophie Thornton for Beecham Green.
Good morning, councillor Steve Bares, Deputy Chair of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee.
Good morning councillor Toby Mallinson, councillor for Hillsborough and Green Party spokesperson in this committee.
Hello, I'm councillor Rob Bannister and I represent Graves Park.
Good morning, I'm Lauren McLean, I'm a councillor for Walthamstow.
I join Cooper Democratic Services.
This is the David Hollis one, isn't it? Andrea Simpson, Legal Services.
I'm Deborah Glenn, I'm the Policy Officer supporting this Subcommittee.
Thank you all, so particularly welcome to councillor Mallinson, councillor Bannister, who are new on the committee. We have had some apologies, we just take apologies next. So councillor Rooney has sent apologies, councillor Whitaker. And we also have, as a member of this Subcommittee, a representative from Sheffield Health Watch, Lucy Davis, and she's sent her apologies for today but has sent in some information from Health Watch that pertains to each of the four quality accounts, so that's useful for us. Right, before we go any further, because we are in an unusual situation today, being in the pre-general election period, I have got some terms of reference for today's meeting to read out, so that we're all sure on what footing we are holding our discussions to fit within those pre-election period restrictions. So I would like to remind everyone attending and speaking today that we are in the pre-election restriction period. This means that the council has to be especially aware of its legal duty not to publish any material that may be seen to favour a candidate or party in the election. There is also a requirement to ensure government policy is presented in a balanced and even-handed manner. Publicity is given a wide meaning and includes matters said in council-hosted meetings. I therefore require everyone speaking today to confine their questions and comments to those strictly necessary to conduct the business on the agenda and not to stray into incidental or related matters that might breach the publicity restrictions. There are a number of reports on today's agenda relating to the quality of local NHS services, as policy relating to the National Health Service is led by the government and is a matter of political debate in the general election, I would ask elected members to restrict their comments to the content of the reports themselves and not to stray into those wider issues of healthcare policy. And just to say that we have had a discussion amongst members before we've come into the room today to agree a broad basis for what we will and won't comment on today. So we also have Andrea with us as legal advice today to make sure that we don't cross any lines. Right, so exclusion of the public and press, I believe there were no items today that requires exclusion of public or press. I will mention at this point that we have removed, during this pre-election period, public questions are removed from the agenda because that doesn't fit with the pre-election rules. So apologies to members of the public, but there will be future opportunities to bring questions to the committee. We've also removed members' questions from this agenda because necessarily that is something that could imply political involvement. Declarations of interest, I have to ask whether any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda. Okay, thank you. And then we're on to the minutes of the previous meeting, included in your agenda pack. We'll keep this brief as everyone's had a chance to read them beforehand, so I'm asking members to approve as a correct record the minutes of the last meeting held on the 14th of March. Are there any comments on the minutes? Are we happy with the minutes? I'm aware that there are a couple of action points that have fallen by the wayside because of multiple pre-election periods, so we held that meeting just before we went into the local election restricted period and then we've gone straight into the general election restricted period. So there are a couple of actions there, I'm looking at Deborah, that we need to still pick up, which involve writing to various bodies, I think. We'll pick those up as soon as we're able to after 4th of July. Right, on to our main items of business, so item five, we have the quality account from Sheffield Children's Hospital Trust and we have Yvonne Millard and Craig Radford with us today, thank you for coming, to take us through that report with a brief introduction and then we'll have questions and comments from members and we are asked to provide feedback to be published along with your report. So I'm going to start a stopwatch if that's okay, I don't mean to be mean with time but we probably need to keep it to half an hour. So take it away Yvonne and Craig, thank you.
Good morning everyone, my name is Yvonne Millard and I'm the Chief Nurse at Sheffield Children's Hospital.
Morning everyone, I'm Craig Radford, the Chief Operating Officer at Sheffield Children's.
Thank you for the invite, we're delighted to be able to share our quality accounts with you and we do welcome feedback. We know Health Watch aren't here today but we have received their feedback, that's in the pack and we will take their comments on board. So the plan will be briefly, I will touch on the two priorities that sit within my portfolio from last year and where we're at with those and then talk to this year's one. Craig will touch on his priority for last year and his for this year. So I will go into a little bit about us, so I don't think everyone realises that Sheffield Children's is not just the acute building up the road. We have 0-19 services, which is health visiting school nursing, we have tertiary care such as critical care transport, we also have children and young people mental health services, that's community inpatient and day case. So all of that counts as Sheffield Children's. Last year, one of our first priorities was implementing patient safety instant response framework. It sounds very fancy but essentially it's a way of investigating incidents and the system changed to draw out much more learning, which is really the point of an investigation. So we set out our priorities in last year's accounts, I'm pleased to say that we have achieved all of the aims in that domain. The key one for us as an organisation was that we took a compassionate approach, it was never about blame, it's always about learning, that's embedded really well in the organisation. And what we really focused on was involving our children, young people and families right at the offset, so their voice was central to any investigation, their questions were embedded within that and then we share all of the learning with them during and at conclusion of any investigation. So we achieved our piece of objective, it's business as usual but we know that we will continue to build on that. I'm pleased to say the same for our second priority, which was outstanding experience. We now have a strong voice in all of our governance structures from children, young people and families, we hear patient stories directly, their lived experience at our board meetings, we have appointed two experienced leads whose job is purely to focus on the experience, the lived experience engagement of our children, young people and families. We've also done quite a lot of work within that on health qualities, which Craig may touch on shortly, and we've grown our youth forum to increase their diversity. So again, that's no business as usual but we will continue to build on those. All of the priorities from last year, we now have a standing agenda item in our Quality Committee because we don't want them to drop off that radar, so we continue to monitor through that. This year, we developed our priorities through reviewing national targets, listening to our children, young people, families and colleagues, thematic reviews of complaints and we looked at our performance against other providers and benchmarked particularly with the Children's Hospital Alliance. So I'll talk you through the two priorities that sit within my portfolio. The first one is sepsis. Sepsis is a life-threatening reaction to an infection that can be very hard to spot. We chose this priority, our own audits and investigation have shown us that there is more to do in raising awareness and early recognition of this. We know that patients aren't always treated as quickly as they should be and we know that there is national work being done but it hasn't improved as much as it could. We chose this in particular because we know from last year that by making it a priority with executive oversight, there's a real focus on it and we make really good headway in it. So what we're doing in our sepsis priority is we have appointed a sepsis nurse whose sole role is raising awareness and education in this arena. To learn and improve, we have listened to families, we've reviewed audits and case reviews, we are working directly with families who have been affected by sepsis and we're learning from them, they're being very generous with their time. We have improved our guidelines, I can go into detail of that when we get to questioning. We've improved our training, that is now included in induction and particularly in our resuscitation induction. We have implemented standardised early warning systems, which is a way of recognising when a child or young person becomes unwell, it's much easier now to identify that. We've introduced an escalation system for parents and carers, if they feel that their child is clinically unwell and they are not being listened to, they have an alternate route to take to get a second opinion for that child. And I'm pleased to say that we are one of the early adopters of Martha's Rule, which has been widely publicised but again, happy to take questions on that. Our second priority will be to improve bereavement services. We know from recent bereavements, complex complaints and recommendations from inquests that our bereavement care isn't as good as it should be. We have only got one chance to get this right for a family and we need to do it the best we can. We have reviewed our entire bereavement programme, we are currently appointing a bereavement nurse and a bereavement coordinator. I now hold the central function for bereavement, so all services within that, including Rose Cottage, which is our mortuary, will sit with me. It's a whole family approach, it's not just about the parents, it's about the siblings and those that matter to that person. We have appointed a joint agency response nurse, we're reviewing our key worker training and that essentially means our core offer to all families will be the same. We know we are going to focus on communication with families, we have now sourced additional support for counselling through Bluebell Wood. All of this is being guided with those from lived experience. So I will pass over to Craig, thank you.
Thanks Yvonne. So I'm just going to touch on the two criteria for my areas. So last year, we set one of the priorities regarding reducing waiting times, which was in line with national targets, but equally importantly about informing and keeping patients and families involved in their pathway of care and supporting them whilst they waited for that appointment or for that surgery. So the positive is that we did continue to reduce waiting times despite multiple rounds of industrial action and we are reducing the size of our physical health waiting times. As Yvonne alluded to as well, we've done some really good work with trying to address health inequalities, so we actually publish in our public board papers a Health Inequalities Performance Report, where we look at our waiting times and our services being accessed by both ethnicity and deprivation and we try to amend our service offer for those families. An example I'll give you of that is we have a predictor tool around kind of predicting which families are unlikely to attend their appointments and we would ring those families up and try to give them access to either public transport or other mechanisms in order to support their attendance and that's had a really positive impact. The other things I'd say is we've invested as a health system in our mental health services for community mental health services and that's having an impact on mental health and also we've expanded the provision of support into schools around mental health provision. So that was last year and then the priority for this year is a continuation of some of those supporting families whilst they wait for care with particular focus on our neurodevelopmental services where we do have extensive waiting times in those areas. So some of the things we are looking to take forward to address, which is critical in terms of involving families and different community faith routes within that, is kind of acknowledging people's referral from GPs or from other sources. We now publish all of our waiting times on our website and via kind of various different national platforms. And what we've also started to do, and we need to broaden this out and make it more specific, is we have a very robust patient library with specific information of how families and patients can be supported whilst they wait for whichever condition they are referred into. And then as I alluded to, kind of going out and seeking patients and families engagement has been really key. So an example of that is we've translated some of our information into a video in Roma so that people from that background can understand what appointments and where their appointments are going to be. And what we need to do is roll that out further across the organisations of our services. So linking a lot to what Yvonne's just said, we're really kind of trying to build the services around the patients and make sure they're engaged while they wait. Thank you, happy to take questions.
Thank you very much indeed. So members, questions or comments? We've got 20 minutes left for this, so be fairly concise and remember that our comments are, if you want your comments or questions to be considered, to be included in the feedback that we're going to submit, I think by tomorrow, then please say that when you come in.
Laura. Thank you and thank you for bringing that report today. Just a couple of questions about the waiting times part of the report, which I think was on page 25 of our original pack. It was good to hear the progress on reducing the waiting times to achieve the 65 weeks. I just wanted to ask about the hand surgery, which is an area where you highlighted, there's still some patients waiting over 65 weeks. And I just wondered if the only sort of time scales were sort of dealing with that and where the children with their hands, you know, developmentally it's important that they're able to use them as well as they can. So that was one, my first question. And then my second question, which is relating to the mental health offer for crisis care and you've let us know that the commissioning for the crisis line was unsuccessful because none of the bids met the criteria, but no firm dates have been set for the work to be completed and I just wondered what the sort of plan was for moving ahead with that really because it sounds like quite a much needed service and from speaking to people in the role I represent and, you know, I know that, so yeah, it'd be good to hear about that. Thank you.
So I'll call up both of them. So the hand surgery and the plastics care linked to that is very highly specialised, so in terms of the organisations across the country that can provide what we provide is very specialised because of that, we don't have a massive team that can do all of that, so there's only about three surgeons who can actually do the very delicate surgery. There was a number of things towards the end of March with regard to kind of maternity leave or absence, which kind of meant that we had those absences from that team. Pleased to report, everybody's back in and here and we've managed to recruit a substantive consultant post in the past couple of months anyway, so that situation actually has now resolved itself, so that's positive. And the patients who were waiting, particularly at the end of the financial year, have now actually been treated within April and May anyway, so for that, that's one of the areas where it's continually going to get better as we go through the year. So that was the first question. The second bit regarding the crisis line, which is a critical point as you made, is what we were trying to do is kind of link it with the safe space element to it, which is why it wasn't successful. What we'd already had in place was a relationship, as many organisations have, with Rethink, which is an independent provider to kind of provide that crisis line. So what we've done is extended that for another six months, but we're having conversations both with our Sheffield partners but also South Yorkshire partners around how we can best provide that because it's important, but then the volume of patients that use it, both for adults and children, is quite variable. So and there was a national requirement to have that 24/7 crisis line in place, so we will continue to have it as we have, what we're trying to do is make sure is that we're giving us the best offer of patients and best value for money.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks for the report, it was very interesting. I was very pleased to hear about patients on the board, patient representatives on the board, which I think is very powerful. I think I'm going to be asking the other trusts about patient records, electronic records, because I think there's some change going on in other providers, but I'm just curious to know which patient record system you use? Is it system one or?
We might do a double act on this one. So as Yvonne said in the introduction, because we provide mental health, community and acute services, there isn't one single system that we use across the whole of the organisation. So system one is used for our mental health and community services, but then our main EPR, our main electronic patient record for the acute services is Careflow. So and then what we've also done, or we've been doing through here and it's mentioned in one of the sequins, is we've rolled out electronic prescribing as well, which is a separate system. So most of these systems do link in, so there is kind of one central record, but largely speaking, there's a system one which does the community and mental health and then the acute physical health uses the Careflow systems. Both of them are longstanding within the organisation, I am aware the trusts are in the process of upgrading their systems and going through a massive change process as part of that, but ours have been embedded for a number of years now as part of our digital kind of strategy.
And so the systems do talk to each other effectively, I think you alluded to that, but that's my concern is when someone moves from one area to another, there's access to the old records and all that.
Yeah, within the organisation, we have good mechanisms of kind of making sure that, because obviously patients can present both with a physical health condition and a mental health condition, so we would involve our respective teams, so they would bring all of that information to a multidisciplinary team kind of conversation. Across South Yorkshire and the wider patch, it would vary in terms of different organisations have got different systems and I think that is something going forward that collectively we would look at about how we can make that better.
Thank you.
If there's nobody else, I'll chip in myself. I wanted to ask about a couple of figures. Vaccine delivery, so staff flu vaccination with a 62% uptake, I just wondered what the factors are behind that relatively low uptake and have there been any consequences to that in terms of staff sick days? Would you want to see that improving?
Thank you. So our target is to offer 100% of our colleagues vaccine, we did do that, 62% of our colleagues took that offer up. That's an improvement on where we have been previously and actually we're one of the highest performing organisations in the region. We have done some engagement with colleagues, there is vaccine hesitancy, there is a feeling that it wasn't a problem last year, so perhaps I'll be okay not to be vaccinated. We haven't seen any correlation between flu uptake and increased sickness. What we have done is we have learnt from last year on what we could do better and we did put some incentive schemes in, that did help. We did increase our offer so that colleagues could access vaccine from seven o'clock in the morning right through till 10 o'clock at night across our community sites, not just the acute site. So everything we did last year, again, we will learn from, we will adapt and adopt how we deliver it next year and hopefully we'll see an improvement going forward.
Okay, thank you. On the, where you've got the sequin, is that, is it sequin, is that how you say it? Yeah, so the sequin targets and performance against those, so there was the flu vaccine numbers and then we've got routine outcome monitoring of, so this is about perinatal mental health service access. So there's a target to achieve 50% of children and young people and women in the perinatal period accessing mental health services, having their outcomes measured, having their outcomes measured, recorded at least twice, I think I've read that right. So the 50% target, but am I reading this right, that you're hitting nine to 9.7%, which is marked red? So I'm very curious about that because that's an extremely low figure, I mean, I'm ignorant of the context around it, but what are the implications of that and again, what are the factors around that, that very low figure?
Yeah, happy to take that question. I think that's quite a technical answer. So in terms of the actual description of the sequin, it's 50% of children and then women in the perinatal period, so that's written nationally into how they've described it. So we would be doing the children's element of it and other organisations would be doing the kind of perinatal period as part of that process. What this is, is about recording the outcomes of appointments, about what the next step in the pathway is and recording it in a specific way that allows it to be, data to be pulled via a data feed. So it's quite a technical solution that involves some of the IT software that I alluded to earlier. So the outcomes in terms of are recorded are either in paper notes that are scanned or in our electronic systems, but what it is, is it's a data accuracy thing that gets fed into a national system. What this was and the reason why this was a sequin is it's a precursor to the changing sort of the national targets regarding CAMHS services and how they are recorded and this was to kind of always prepare organisations for being able to do that. What they've actually done in terms of this year, what we're being asked to do, is slightly different now to what that sequin was for last year, so we're in a good place to be able to build on that. I think the point I'd make here is there's no detriment to patient care as a result of not achieving that target because it's recorded, it's just not recorded in a way that you can feed it into a national algorithm that pulls out that information. So the other key bit is patient care's not affected, but it's been superseded to a degree by a change in the national system for this year.
I just wanted to make a comment as well, so that sequin table is quite useful in that it uses red, green, amber to highlight certain numbers, but there's, so my computer's really playing up and it keeps jumping through the report for some reason, I've lost my place now. Our progress against the 2023/24 objectives, that section, I think I would comment that the narrative style of that is useful, but the lack of a rag rating or tick and cross indicator, so it's left to the reader to interpret whether we're looking at a measure of success or more achievements still to come in the future. So I found that section a bit difficult to interpret and I think a simple, you know, are we achieving red, amber, green on that would be quite useful maybe on a future report. are we achieving red, amber, green on that would be quite useful maybe in a future report. Are there any areas in there that you would particularly flag up as not having achieved what you wanted to?
I don't think so. The point that you've just made is, is a really good one because I've gone through it and gone tick, tick, tick to know what we have achieved. I think we have achieved what we set out to do, but I think like most things, you achieve something, can realise that perhaps it wasn't a far enough stretch. Or you lift a stone and see there's more to do. So we've done what we set out to do, but we've discovered there is more that we can do, hence we track through quality committee.
Are there any other questions or comments? I have a question that I think we're probably going to ask each team that comes to present today. So we, this, this week, we've had a very alarming news story about a major cyber attack that's obviously affected delivery of patient services and delayed elective operations and so on in some of the London hospitals. And I think in all the reports we're looking at today, there's what's probably quite a welcome increase in the use of tech and IT and AI to, to improve patient pathways and the deliveries, you know, speed up the delivery of care and look at patient records across systems. But how robust is the cybersecurity on these systems? And, you know, how precarious a position is, is any NHS trust in, in terms of cybersecurity? And is there more that ought to be done to protect these systems, especially with increasing reliance on them?
I'm just going to come in before Craig, give you a really technical answer. So this year for Sheffield Children's, we have decided that our focus is a back to basics, foundations approach. And part of that is, it's really great that we have all this equipment, but you have eyes and a sense of smell. And actually, the most important thing we do in looking after any of our children and young people and families is look and listen and feel. So that, that will always be, if, if the systems go down, that's what we will come back to, which is the basics of care. Craig can give the technical answer.
Yeah, so a couple of things. So each organisation is required to have what's called an accountable emergency officer who kind of plans for any eventualities such as a cyber attack or a fire, all those kind of things. So I, I hold that responsibility on behalf of the board. Also on the board sits the chief information officer, who kind of feeds in regularly around cybersecurity. So there's, there's a number of things I'd say on the question, which is very pertinent based on what's happened in London this week. So first of all, whenever we put a new system in, such as the electronic prescribing one I alluded to, everything, we have a business continuity plan that goes with that. So if this, if this system is out, what do we, would we do? How would we revert that to paper? Where's that paper stored? Do people know where to find it? How do we do it? How do we get that continuity of care? So always, whenever we put a new electronic system in, there's always that document before we go live with it. We also then have a responsibility to test that through the, through the year. So as part of the emergency planning resilience and response that we have as an organisation, we do run various different tests around if our A and E system went down, if our main pass system went down, how would we respond? Where would we get all of those informations from? So obviously, having all of this digital technology is brilliant. It's, it gives us so much more benefits, but I do think, as you, as per the question, we have to have those backups from that process. So we, we test them. And then from a, a chief information officer perspective, this is much more technical than I fully understand, but we have lots of kind of cybersecurity and firewalls and all of the appropriate systems. And as NHS organisations, we have to kind of submit like a, a security assessment around from a data perspective, are we there? And as an organisation, we've got everything in that we possibly could do. But as we all know, this is kind of like an arms race where people are always trying to get around the systems. But touch wood, at the minute, that's not impacted on us as an organisation, and we've definitely done training on that in the past year to make sure systems are in place.
I'm going to bat on with one final question. If nobody else wants to come in, I feel like I'm hogging the chair a bit. But on the sepsis priority, I just, just comparing what's in your quality account with Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, I just wondered whether my, my perception here is that you're a little bit behind in addressing that priority compared with STH. But I just wondered whether that's because of different presentation of, of how the work's been undertaken. So are, are you a step behind? The reason I ask is because STH perhaps uses a bit more statistical presentation of, so the, you know, they've been quite exact about the length of time for an assessment to take place, having come, come down dramatically and so on. So I just wondered whether you're there, whether you're, I mean, is there knowledge sharing between the two trusts as well? And where, where do you sit in comparison?
We don't have as much data as I think we should have. We did do an audit at the beginning of last year, which showed that there were some gaps. A practical example of that is there's something called the golden hour. And from diagnosis of sepsis to administration of treatment, it's an hour. Because we weren't clearly indicating when the diagnosis was made, it's impossible to track if we delivered within that golden hour. We've now updated our guidelines, so that's very specifically time stamped. So we aren't where we should be, but I'm quite confident now that we have recognised that. We've done all of the groundwork. We've absolutely worked with families to make sure that it isn't, it isn't completely data driven. Some of it is, but some of it is about how our families experience us and feel that they are not being listened to. So that we are playing catch up, I would say slightly.
Thanks, that sets it, that sets it in a better context, thank you. Right, I think if we're at the end of our discussion, just give me one. So I'm going to ask Deborah to summarise for us some of the points that members have raised that we might want to put into our feedback. So if you could do that, Deborah, and if, if members can indicate if we've missed anything out, or if you feel there's anything there that shouldn't be there.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so I've made a note of, of the way the discussion's gone. I would, what I'd propose to do is put into the response from the committee, a kind of bullet point of what those issues were that were raised and a statement, excuse me, a statement along the lines of, these were the points that members sought clarification on during the discussion. I'll go, I'll now go through those points in a second, just to make sure I've got them right. And what I was also going to do was flag up issues that perhaps the committee might want to return to at a future day as part of, because we're, because the, the, this is the first meeting of this civic year, so they're in the process of developing the work programme as we move along. So it could then, any issues that the committee wants to return to could feed into the development of the work programme. So I have the issue of the plans to deal with the waiting list for the specialist hand surgery, the children's mental health waiting list for the crisis service. Have I got that right? That was a bit, that I missed a little bit yet. The electronic patients' records and clarity around the compatibility between the system one, which is used for mental health and community, care flow for the physical and acute setting, if I've got that right? And also rolling out the electronic prescribing system as well. Vaccine delivery and the factors behind the low uptake, the monitoring of sequins, perinatal mental health access, and the apparent clarity was sought over the fact that that seemed to be a low, a low performance. And the fact that this has no detrimental effect on the level of care, and it's a recording issue, which has been superseded by changes this year. Progress against, I'm not sure what I've written here, just bear with me, against 23, oh yeah, the progress against the 20, 20, 2023/24 section is, which is a more narrative section, but that a rag rating system would be useful to insist, assist with interpretation. There wasn't anything in particular in that section that hadn't been achieved. Cybersecurity, how robust are the systems? And the, the clarification around, Craig, you're the accountable emergency officer for the board, and the business continuity planning for all, for all aspects of cybersecurity. And the final one was sepsis, and whether the comparison with Sheffield Teaching Hospital reflects that you're a little bit behind them and do you knowledge share with each other? And I think I just go on to the next page. Yeah, and you said that you didn't have as much data as you should have, tracking the golden hour in particular, and that you are a little bit playing slight catch up on that. So hopefully, if, I'm getting lots of nods, so I'm hoping I've caught that right. Obviously, I won't go into that much detail in the response. Like I said, I'll do a bullet, a bullet point, and I don't, haven't picked up anything in particular that needs to be carried forward into the work programme, unless you want to pull that out.
Is that the case? There's nothing coming out of that that we particularly want to put on the work paper?
Nothing specific, Chair. I think that, you know, in order to do this justice, and I think this applies to all the quality reports on today's agenda, that, you know, I think we need to have a sit down about, to discuss the work programme separately from, from this in order to pick out the issues that we'd like to pursue in the work.
Nothing immediately arising right now. Good, thank you, Deborah. So Deborah will, is delegated to write up the feedback on our behalf. So final chance to add or object. All good? Are we happy? Thank you. And thank you, Yvonne and Craig, for your time today and for being so willing to explain context and so on to us. Really appreciate that, thank you. Brief interlude while we change over officers. Okay, so our next agenda item is the quality account from Sheffield Teaching Hospitals Trust, and we have Sandy and Angela with us. Thank you for coming. You've got a presentation, I think, have you, or is it verbal? Just verbal, okay. So we're trying to keep to half an hour for each part, obviously, so if you can confine your verbal introduction to, say, 10 minutes, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. So we're delighted to be here again to share our quality report, which is almost a retrospective review of the work that we've undertaken over the year. I'm just going to do a little bit of an introduction, then I'm going to hand over to Angie to give you more of the detail. So as you'll be aware, Sheffield Teaching Hospitals primarily provides adult acute surgery and community services across the city from two main sites. But we have a variety of other different services that provide care to patients across the country as well. So just to pull out a few points from the report, there's three key things that I'd just like to share with you in terms of the developments that we've undertaken across the year. The first is the redevelopment of our Sheffield elective orthopaedic centre, we call that SEOC. And we've almost have a state of the art sort of theatre complex to enable us to safely and effectively treat as many of our orthopaedic patients as possible. And you'll know that one of our key, key sort of aims over the years to reduce the number of patients that we have waiting for care in our services. The second point I'd like to mention relates to our Sheffield maternity services. So we obviously had a discussion about our maternity services last year, and during the year, we've continued all of our improvement work and worked really hard with both our staff and our regulators to improve the, the care that we deliver to our women and children. I'm pleased to say that the Care Quality Commission have recognised that work, and we've had all conditions on our licence have been stepped down. So that's a really significantly improved position for the organisation. But more importantly, we're seeing that improvement come through in terms of the feedback that we receive from our women and, and families. So we, we can see that in the patient feedback that we, we receive as well as in the surveys that are nationally undertaken. So whilst we're never complacent and we're always really clear there's more work to do, we're, we're, you know, generally are really pleased with the improvement work that's been undertaken over the year. And then finally, I just want to bring to your attention some of the work we do with our Sheffield Hospital charities. So we work very closely with the charity. And this year, we've introduced a Dragons' Den type arrangement, which means that any member of our staff can bring forward an idea that they, they would like to try and trial in their area. We do the traditional Dragons' Den, they have to come and present that to, to a panel of colleagues, including both our governors and external colleagues as well. And a small number of individuals were then awarded £25,000 to go away and pilot their idea and to, to implement that innovation in practice. And just to bring, bring forward one of those we developed, we call it an easy gown. So you, you all know that when you, sometimes when you go into a hospital, you're required to wear a gown that has traditionally a gap up, up the back that doesn't help to protect the dignity of, of our patients. So one of our members of staff has designed a different way of adapting that gown so that it does preserve the dignity of, of our patients and enables a more comfortable journey for our patients as they receive our care. So we're piloting that different style of gown and basically has ties in different places and doesn't have a big gap at the back. So that's just one really small example of how we're helping to support our staff to innovate in practice. There's a whole range of different items in the report. You recognise the size of the report. Once Angie's done her introduction and summary on our key priorities, think about last year and for next year, we're really happy to take any questions on any aspect of the report. So I'll hand over to Angie now to complete the next bit. Thank you.
Thank you. So last year, we had three objectives for improvement in our quality. The, the first was around dementia, been a two-year objective to improve the care there, developing training materials, a new care plan. And we were really pleased we had funding then for two admiral nurses, which will help continue this work further forward. That work is now considered complete, although we do have a dementia steering group, so obviously it doesn't stop, but it becomes business as usual. The second one we had was around improving accessible information, particularly in ensuring we knew how patients wanted to be communicated with. And the aim of this was to kickstart a programme to look at methods of asking, storing that information and assuring, assuring it was accessible to the staff. So that was successful. We got that up and running in the pilot areas. It's being rolled out wider. And part of that was ensuring that when we moved to the new electronic patient record, that will be included and the information we already have will transfer across. So that's now sitting under the communications group. And then the final one was around the management of medicines, the safe and secure medicines, focusing on the checklist that we do. Um, focusing on the checklist that we do uh in areas uh on a monthly and quarterly basis. There was huge progress made, uh a lot of education and work with staff um which really made us think about how we were asking and what we were asking and the assurance there. So we did a lot of work, really improved it. There is still some work to do, it was good progress, not wholly complete. Uh, we have a medicine safety group which will continue that work. But also, we've been looking at the new CQC uh quality standards that they've set. And one of those obviously is the medicines and optimisation. We've looked at how we um would potentially meet all of those. And we have some priority areas and medicines will go into that and we will continue that work through that route. So for next year, we have set a further uh three objectives. Continuing in accessibility, we wanted to, and this was a suggestion that came from Health Watch, about improving the experience for visually impaired uh patients, particularly focusing on communication um which we do feel is important. We're also going to be working on the assessment and management of pressure ulcers. Uh, we want to bring in a new risk assessment tool, uh which has shown real promise elsewhere um to improve care in that regard. And the final one came from patient feedback, uh both through our FFT and through some complaints and concerns around the management of pain. Um, and we really do, we have quite an ambitious project around um education and, and working on trying to improve that for our patients. So happy to answer any questions.
Do indicate if you've got questions or comments, Toby.
Uh, yes, a similar question around, uh you, you, you're moving to a new um patient record system. Um, obviously, I'm aware that NHS has got System One. Um, uh, can you give some reassurance about compatibility of the new system to that? And whether a patient moving from one setting to another, into, from outside to inside the, the trust uh will uh have a seamless experience in terms of their access to their medical records via their clinician?
Thank you. Um, so I anticipated that question. Um, so we have, we do have a very ambitious programme with regards to the introduction of a new electronic patient record. Um, we're planning to do that at the moment in October this year, so we call out our Connect twenty four programme. We have a very um robust and extensive um programme in terms of the pre-work that we need to do to get to that um changeover point, as well as then um a huge amount of work embedding and ensuring we're, we're getting the best out of our system. And whilst we've got that date of implementation in October, we, we really see that as the, the first part of the journey. Um, because we'll have a system and we then need to use that system wisely um to help care for our patients. In terms of the structure that we have supporting that, um, we have a clinically led structure. So we have a chief uh clinical information officer who's one of um our anaesthetists. We have a chief nursing officer as well, um, looking at that uh work led, led by, also supported and led by a, an um uh chief innovation director who was a previous ops um director. So we have a really strong triumvirate of colleagues who are um taking that work forward. And clearly, with any, any of this um type of programme, patient safety is really important. And we're doing a lot of work now to make sure we're in the best position possible, ready for that transition. But then recognise it doesn't stop there, there's a lot of work to do afterwards. Um, we do use System One now, we use System One in our community services, so that, that will remain in the new, in the new structure um going forward. Um, I think that's probably, does that answer your question sufficiently?
Uh, not quite sure. So, so i- is there compatibility between within, so obviously you're saying you've got System One within, you're going to keep that.
We, we use that now and yeah, clearly, it's one of the most um used systems, there's two key systems that are used in the community and with our GP practices, we, and we link in to System One. That will remain, as well as the access to the main spine, so where individuals can draw down data from as well, so.
So the consultant is working with the new system, would they have to look at two systems if a patient has come from somewhere else or?
So we have, we have um a um piece of software called Aperture, which means that an individual can look at one screen and can access a different system from that one screen that was um developed and that will remain with the new system. So whilst we, um, our EPR programme isn't to merge System One with our new EPR, but, but our clinicians have access to each of those different elements from one screen for one patient. So you have a patient name and you have access to the system. So for example, we have the um diagnostic test results on the ICE system as well. That will be, that's available in one click for, for that patient view for our clinicians.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, thank you. Um, as you had a question about the quality performance and information, I was looking particularly at the bit where it talks about um waiting times. And there's the data, obviously, for Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, the percentages, and then underneath there's the line of national standards. And I just wondered, the national standard, is that data for national standard, is it? Um, hospitals are actually reaching that level, or is it just something that you should be aspiring to, or is it based on?
Um, would it be possible just to show me the page? Because we could have both answers on that, if you just um show me which.
Particularly looking at page one hundred and eight of the pack, but it's fifty seven of your report.
Fifty seven, if you just bear with me one moment, and I can answer your question.
I don't know if I articulated that very well either.
Ah, so, so yeah, that, that's a nationally um set standard in terms of a, a target across, it's not an average of other quality. So it is a national standard. Um, and, and we know as, as, as with many organisations, there are a number of challenges in terms of um ensuring we're effectively and, and safely delivering as much care as possible to our patients. And, and it is a huge area of focus for us as an organisation. Thank you.
I think it's probably worth adding that in terms of our waiting list, we had, as you, I'm sure you know, we had been in tier one. Um, we are now out of that, um, so we, it has been recognised that we've made improvements. It does take time, it's still a massive focus for us to get that down.
For elective care.
Yeah, that is, thank you.
I'm gonna chip in, but please, please indicate if, I don't want to hog this. Um, referring to the same section that um Council McLean just did, the uh, so this is um around page fifty six of your report. Uh, so I'm looking at the cancer screening and urgent GP referral for suspected cancer. And this is an area that we know is um experiencing a lot of challenges and something that we've scrutinised and are continuing to do so at South Yorkshire level. Um, and particularly in terms of um things like non, um non-surgical oncology and the challenges in that field. Now, here we've got what looks to me like a, quite a dramatic drop off of performance since twenty twenty one, um with sixty percent going down to thirty nine percent for urgent GP referrals. Am I, am I read, I'm reading that the right way around, am I that a, a lower figure is worse? Yep, um, so I wondered if you could set that in context. So even in twenty twenty one, that was quite a long way off the national target, uh the national standard, and now a really significant way off the national standard. Um, so what lies behind that and what are the implications for patients? Um, and similarly, the cancer screening referral, which had a, a quite a significant drop off uh and is a long way off the national standard.
Yes, thank you. So um this is an area that does give us a lot of concern. Clearly, it's um not the position we'd want to be in as, as an organisation and it's not right for our patients and families. So um a lot of work needs to be undertaken. I think there are two key areas that we, we're focusing on at the moment. The first one is faster diagnosis standards, so a number of patients are referred to us with suspected cancer. Um, a reasonably high percentage of those patients don't have cancer, so we need to be ensuring we're um diagnosing those patients as quickly as possible, so that we, we're not leaving um our patients in a worried state almost, wondering whether they are, do or don't have cancer or not. So that's one of our key areas of focus at the moment. And then we're also looking at our patients who've waited the longest, so patients on our sixty-two day pathways, as you've mentioned there, and, and looking to treat those patients um that, that um have, have been waiting the longest and to, to reduce that, that long wait. It is a key area of focus for us, we have um, um a group working on this, it's chaired by our, our chief executive. Um, we know we've made significant improvements in elective care. This is the next area of focus that we need, we need to improve our performance on. Um, so very valid comments and um I hope to come back next year with a better position.
It's probably not the time or the place to delve into the sub- the substance of that hope. We, I think we all hope as well, but it, this isn't, this isn't the time today. But um no, and please know that we're, we're with you in hoping for that.
Um. Apologies, I'm happy to give some, a little bit of context to that, because the, the, the reasons for, for that performance are quite um um not, not complex, but, but varied across the organisation. We know that some areas have workforce challenges, we know that pathways can be improved, um our processes can be improved in some areas. It links um to, you know, appropriate theatre availability and, and staff. So in, in all the different areas where we, we um deliver patient care, we're looking to try and pull out what are, what are the key areas that are, are helping. The, one that helped to improve the pathway, but also to, to um help us deliver faster, more effective care. But that's quite multifaceted across the organisation and we need, you know, clearly, it's an area of focus. Thank you, apologies, I did miss that, my question.
Um, I wanted to draw out a few positives that I think really, really stick out from the report. Um, the working in partnership with Hallam University's Advanced Wellbeing Research Centre, I think is really positive. Um, I'm, I'm gonna look for approval that, that I think mentioning these positives is a good thing um to include in our feedback. Um, I think as well, the um proud values in the Dragons' Den uh was, that was really exciting to read. I think that continuous improvement culture and in, and making sure that everybody at every level is involved in that and has a chance to be involved in that, I think is extremely positive um and can only result in positive innovation. Uh, and I think, I think last year you reported um that a nurse, a, a, a a bed turnaround innovation had happened and, and won a national award uh for rap- rapid clean, rapid deep clean um and turnaround of beds. Um, and so that kind of innovation that presumably comes from um, from staff level um rather than from, from top management, I think is extremely positive. Uh, also the climate action, which uh reading through the, I'm sure that's just a summary of, of all that you do. Um, but I think that's again very positive, going way above and beyond the really easy stuff like relaxed mowing regimes. That's like the really easy to achieve stuff, isn't it? And actually, cost saving anyway. Um, but moving into plastic and waste reduction and in the food, um uh food miles reduction, all these kinds of things, I think are all really positive as well. Looking forward to seeing what more you can do in that space with um that strong commitment to achieving more in that. Um, I think as well in health inequalities, there's some really positive stuff there as well. For example, the dental care for homeless people, taking that, you know, to, to where people are uh and providing it for free, I think that's excellent. There's, there are other things in the report that are similarly excellent. Um, i- in that area, I'm really keen to see what more can be achieved with greater partnership working. Um, so health, um local authority and voluntary sector uh working together. Really, really keen in the future to explore much more of what could be done locally um to uh in terms of health creation and prevention work and reducing hospital admissions. I think it would also be interesting to hear a bit more detail around what, with the work that you've done with Yorkshire Ambulance Service as well. That's um in the executive summary, but there's, I don't think there's a lot of detail around it. Um, so it might be interesting at some point to hear uh what is being done to limit patient waiting times, improve ambulance turnaround, um, and I think you referred to patient flow. Uh, so that's, that's all, I think that sounds interesting, but there's not a lot of detail in the report about it. Um, so that would be something we might want to explore more.
Okay, so just to respond to those uh points, thank you very much for um that feedback. I think on um innovation and empowering our staff, we, we just this month launching a new proud improvement um initiative which builds on the work that we've done, that brings together all of that um improvement work and, and.
To say what that proud.
So, so proud, okay. So proud is patient first, respect, ownership, unity and delivery. So um that's, we, we call it proud, but that guides our values. And also, we have some really clear behaviours um established under, underneath that. So um it, it's almost what drives what we do, it helps with our decision-making in terms of do, you know, whatever we do, does that align to our proud values? And then we've incorporated, we've incorporated that into our improvement work, so we've got proud improvement now and, and which seeks to empower all of our staff to, um if you've got a great idea or something you think we should be doing, we, we need to be building on that. And, and like you say, I think it's absolutely, it's where we get our best ideas from. And then we, we hopefully support and enable our teams to deliver. Um, sustainability, yeah, huge area of focus, it's now one of our um six corporate objectives. Um, so always more work to be done, but um, you, you know, our catering team are really innovative in, in what they're doing. We have the um no mow may um elements and all sorts of um work like that, so yeah, really pleased with that. And, and we do, you know, continue to work in partnership on a number of levels with Sheffield Place colleagues. We work with um acute trust colleagues at South Yorkshire level as well as the um wider ICB. And then we're involved, for example, in um a Shelford group of colleagues from across the country of, of similar sized teaching organisations, so we do a lot of um best practice sharing. Um, and we had the Shelford Secretary at visit the trust only this week to come and visit a number of our different services and, and to learn um from, from what we do. And, and again, we, we learn from what they do. Um, moving on to our work with Yorkshire Ambulance Services, clearly a, a huge area of focus. We, we know um many of the challenges we have it linked back to flow in our organisation. So making sure that our patients are treated in, in the right place, effectively, you know, as quickly and safely as possible. So um whilst having a, a busy organisation can create risk, we know that not releasing our ambulances to go and pick up that patient at home creates more of a risk. Um, so we're working really hard with Yorkshire Ambulance Service to um, if I could give more information, to enable flow um through the organisation, and that's multifaceted at different parts of the organisation, both in A and E, then ensuring our patients are safely transferred to base wards as well as um discharged effectively to whether that's home or another place of care. But I'm gonna pause there, because I'm gonna let Angie come in with hopefully some more information. Thank you.
So one of the, we've, we've been looking a lot at how we make it easier for the ambulance service. Um, so one of the things we've done in the discharge lounge is set it up so, and it's in an easy location for the ambulances to get to, and said that unless there is an absolute must reason that patients are picked up from there, no. So rather than the ambulance teams wasting sort of ten minutes, fifteen minutes every time, walking through corridors, uplifts to get to various wards, it's now pull up, straight in, pick up the patient. So we've made that process much quicker, um which I think is a real positive. And we're monitoring the figures and the delivery of that on a weekly basis at a meeting on, every Monday. Um, and we've also looked at an action card and how, how we react when we start to get several ambulances arriving, because this can happen, you suddenly get a wave in and you have a number of ambulances, and obviously, how do we speed that process up to get them through? Um, with the aim of making sure that none wait for more than forty-five minutes outside. Now, obviously, we're not quite there yet, um but it's work we're continuing to look at. Can we um? Can we things like moving spaces? And this is part of what we've been doing with SDEC as well. But can we just get some of the patients who are okay to come off into another space? And moving patients quicker towards, again, particularly the discharge line comes into that because if the patient isn't waiting on the ward, that bed is available sooner and it's ready. So we get that better flow. So there's a whole raft of work that we're continuing to monitor in there.
Might just worth explaining what SDEC is. It's same day, same day emergency care. So for some of our patients that come into accident emergency, might not need admission to a ward, but they might need some care and treatment and then could be safely discharged back either to their home or to their previous residence. So we we have a what we call an SDEC unit that helps to provide that service. Thank you.
Anything further from members? Okay, Deborah, I'm going to ask you to summarise very quickly, if you can, ever so slightly over time. So if you can give us a brief summary. This one's due on the tenth, so just the other side of the weekend. So effectively deadline of tomorrow.
Thanks Chair. Again, the electronic patient records was the first issue. And in particular, the compatibility with System One. And the Connect twenty four is your new system, right? Thank you. That's due to be implemented in October twenty four. Pre-planning to is work is taking place now to that implementation date. And then obviously, we I've made a note of the fact that you've got a strong staff team taking this forward with patient safety as an important element of that. So can you, System One is
Can I just clarify? The E P R is Connect twenty four?
Yes. Right, sorry.
It is the same.
Yeah, yeah.
It is the same thing.
Sorry, yeah, I'll make sure of that. And System One is used for community services and that will continue. And you talked about a programme called Aperture, which allows access to information from all of the systems on one screen. Performance information against national standards. We sought clarity on how that standard's set and you confirmed that it is set nationally. That's not an average across national settings. The issue of oncology and the significant drop off in performance since twenty one. And we sought clarity around the context for that. That's an area of significant concern. And the two areas of focus are around quick diagnosis for new patients and also tackling the patients that waiting that been waiting the longest. And that you have a group focused on that, which is chaired by the Chief Executive. And this is an area for kind of further investigation in the future. The the committee wanted to support a number of the positive initiatives such as the Dragon's Den. There was also the bed turnaround idea from last year, which had won an award, the climate action and the dental care for homeless people. And we're in particularly interested in greater partnership working around that initiative with the local authority and the voluntary voluntary and community sector to potentially achieve more. You also talked about the proud improvement values and behaviours and incorporating that into your improvement work and the initiatives to share best best practice across the country. And we asked for more detail around the work with Yorkshire Ambulance Service. You talked about, well, it was around patient turnaround, patient waiting and patient flow, which is a huge area of focus around the process of bringing patients into the hospital much quicker and reactions to peak times when ambulances are kind of coming in in a wave. The aim is to make maximum wait time forty five minutes. You're not there yet, but you're still working hard on this. For example, looking at moving patients to different spaces where appropriate. I think that's, let me just check that I've not missed anything.
So are we content for Deborah to summarise that into a feedback? I understand there's a word limit. So that will be condensed to represent
Yes, yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you very much, Deborah. And thank you to Sandy and Angela for your time today. Thank you very much. See you again before too long, I'm sure. Thank you. Our next item is the quality account from Sheffield Health and Social Care N H S Foundation Trust. So a quick changeover of personnel again. Right, welcome to Neil, Vanessa and Tanya this morning. Please introduce yourselves and what your roles are, because I can't quite read your cards there, actually. And then I think you've got a presentation for us, which should appear on the screens on the webcast for anyone watching to see at home. So if you can keep your presentation fairly concise to allow us time for questions after that would be appreciated.
Thank you Chair. I'm Neil Robertson. I'm Executive Director of Operations at Sheffield Health and Social Care.
Hello, I'm Vanessa Garrettty. I'm the Deputy Director of Nursing and Quality at Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust.
And I'm Tanya Baxter, Head of Clinical Governance and Risk at Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust.
So just by way of a quick introduction, Sheffield Health and Social Care Mental Health Trust is a provider of community crisis and inpatient services across Sheffield. We also provide community services outside in the South Yorkshire footprint. And we also have national services, specifically gender identity. The other thing to note is that we have a small number or small cluster of services that provide physical healthcare. So I'm going to hand you over to Tanya, who's going to reflect on our priorities previously. Then Vanessa's going to talk about the priorities going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So over the past three years, from April two thousand twenty one to March twenty twenty four, we've had three quality objectives in place in the organisation. They are around demonstrating measurable and equitable reduction in the use of seclusion and restraint. We collectively use the term restrictive practice within the organisation, which which includes things of people being secluded, people being restrained. So people that are being held to possibly have take some medication or to receive personal care. So when I talk about restrictive interventions and restrictive practice, they're the they're the things that that are included in that in that banner. So our objective has been to reduce the number of restrictive practices that have taken place in the organisation, particularly looking at people from racialised communities. Our second objective was about demonstrating improvements in the number of people from diverse communities actually accessing community based mental health services. We found that we have a high proportion of people from racialised communities in within our inpatient areas. So we were looking at barriers to ensure people are accessing community services so that we can treat more people in the community so they don't become an inpatient. And our final objective was with regards to co-production with service users. So making sure our service users and their carers and families are actually involved in the the care that we deliver. So how we've achieved, what we've achieved this year, again, as I've said, this is the third year of our three year objectives. So we have achieved what we set out to do in this objective. There's never, there is always more to do as an organisation. So just because this is no longer a quality priority for us does not mean to say the work underneath and behind that isn't continuing. So going forwards with this objective, whilst it's not going to be a quality objective for for this year, we obviously are continuing to work with racialised communities to ensure that we we continue the work that we've started and making sure people can access services and that we're, you know, we're not disproportionately restricting somebody's privileges and rights because of their ethnicity and their and their characteristics. This work will will continue forward as part of our reducing restrictive practice strategy and that work stream. So as I said, the work will continue as we go forwards. The next objective with with regards to ensuring we have equitable access. Again, we've achieved the majority of this work. There is an area where we have, we continue to to really push and we know we've got improvements to make, which is around the recording of ethnicity of our service users. We know that we have a large proportion of service users where we on our system, we have recorded as unknown that we we are unaware of their ethnicity. And we need to make changes to that to to make those improvements. So again, whilst it isn't an objective going forwards, that work continues. We have created now a what we call the dashboard, which goes out to services every couple of weeks to ensure that they're focusing on those unknown characteristics. So we can ensure that we're providing person centred care for all our service users and that their needs are being met. The third objective that we've just concluded is again around the co-production. And as we move forwards into this not being a quality objective anymore, the work that we need to to focus it on is around sort of enhanced communications with our service users. We know communication is a massive area that I'm sure we're not alone as a as a national health trust that sort of that that needs to to make some improvements in this area. But we've been a feedback from our our service users and our carers and relatives. We know that this is an area that we must strive to continue to to improve. So we we have done a lot of work this year around implementing the triangle of care, which is basically our our staff, our service users and our carers working together to ensure that those messages are consistent and that we're communicating in an effective way to those. So as I said, that work will also continue as we go forwards.
I'll hand over to Vanessa to talk about this year's.
Okay, thank you. So our objectives going forward for this year, as you can see, are around sexual safety, neurodivergence, dementia and patient level reporting. So I'll start with sexual safety. You may be aware that sexual safety is quite a high profile issue in terms of mental health services nationally and also reflects the wider societal movement around sexual safety. So sexual safety for us is around, it's not just, we're not talking just about sexual assault incidents. We're talking about anything that makes a person feel uncomfortable who comes into our services. So it's thinking about everything from when somebody comes in, whether they want a male or female worker, whether they're on a in a mixed gender environment, how they feel about that, understanding people's trauma histories and how that might impact on their experiences of care currently. In terms of the sexual safety work that we're doing, we've established a working group who are leading the sexual safety work. And that's led by myself and also somebody who's got lived experience of mental health and of using Sheffield Health and Social Care Services. We're focusing particularly on the inpatient areas because that's clearly the highest risk area in terms of sexual safety incidents. But we've established a sexual safety dashboard, which monitors all our sexual safety incidents and enables our services to look at look at their incidents and actually provide some narrative around what's happening and for us to feel assured that we're supporting people appropriately. Our sexual safety work's linked really closely to our safeguarding work. So we have safeguarding huddles. So any any sexual safety concern that's raised by the ward through their daily safety huddles or handovers comes to a huddle that I attend and we take all sexual safety incidents at face value, given that we know that, you know, many people in our services, when they're unwell, they will express concerns that when they're well, they may not have the same concerns. However, given the vulnerability of our patients, we take all those concerns at face value and we investigate everything thoroughly. So that's just a whistle stop tour of that one. In terms of neurodiversity, this is around accepting that we have within the population, neurotypical population and also a neurodivergent population as well. This is around us providing person centred care to everyone in our services. So understanding how our environments, for example, meet people's social and communication needs. Because many people who may have a diagnosis already as being autistic or having A D H D, but there are also many people who are undiagnosed in services. So it's around making sure our environments consider sensory needs and consider people's communication needs, but also ensuring that our teams across all our services have a really good understanding of neurodiversity and can work with people in a person centred care way to understand how their neurodivergent needs might impact on them. So as it says there, we're doing lots of work around training and looking at assessing our staff competence in all our services. We have a nurse consultant who's providing some training that's based on a national model and looking at our environment and working with people with lived experience. We also have a staff network group with people who have neurodivergent needs. So working with that group as well and also looking at how we support our staff who have neurodivergent needs as well. So in terms of dementia, again, you know, more and more people are being diagnosed with dementia, but equally more and more people are living well in the community with dementia. So we decided that we'd give focus to dementia this year. And we're talking about, you know, diagnosis and post diagnostic support for dementia. So what we're doing is we're doing some discovery work to work with all our stakeholders and people in our communities to look at a work plan around dementia care and how we can respond organisationally to people with dementia. And as we've talked about in our earlier objectives, we've had a real focus on working with racialised communities. And that's already starting to emerge within our dementia work, looking at how people in some of our cultural communities might approach, for example, a faith leader around concerns rather than actually contacting services or how we work with wider communities around dementia care as well. Patient level reporting. So we do already have patient level reporting, but what we're trying to look at is a more diverse approach so that we've got a wider range of patient reporting measures that meet people's different needs and also look at our different services. I think the focus there is really very much again around people with lived experience. So we have a really good engagement team. And what we're talking about is formalising the patient reporting element of the work so that once we've got these measures, we bring a group together that's based on people with lived experience. And we look at then what we do with that information and how that information informs our services. I think it's really important to say that's a really trauma informed approach and it avoids people having to make complaints. So really important that we kind of really proactive around people people's concerns, but also that that work's led by other people with lived experience. And just finally to add that, as I've said, with the sexual safety work as well, we're developing a dashboard so we can bring all that together and look at all the different mechanisms and also make sure that the feedback mechanisms that we've got are really inclusive, that we consider things like, is our information translatable? Is it available in paper? Is it available digitally? You know, recognising that some people might have health literacy needs in terms of their literacy level. So how do we make sure the information that we've got is as diverse and inclusive as possible? And how do we reach more people? And how do we change culture to ensure that feedback's really embedded in our services and with our clinicians? Thank you. So I'll hand over to Neil.
I'm obviously conscious of time, but we just wanted to obviously just conclude there with some of the main highlights that around quality improvement. And I wasn't going to go into those into any detail, but just wanted to note them. So thank you.
Thank you very much for all of that.
Thank you very much for all of that. Any comments or questions, Mames? Toby, I'm aware you didn't comment on the last report, actually. I know you had said beforehand that your questions around compatibility of IT systems stands across, really across all four reports today. Did you want to bring that forward again?
Yes, that's what I was indicating for, yeah. So also another patient recording system, which I think is different from the other ones we've heard about today. All of these myriad of systems does cause me concern. I appreciate, you know, you're just one provider, but, you know, it is a weakness of the system if there's not a coherent way of recording patient data. I mean, I appreciate different areas might have different needs and everything. And so there might be good reason for it. But can you give an assurance that the new system is compatible with old systems and that clinicians will be able to access previous records easily without any problems?
So at the moment, we are using three systems. So we use System One, which is part of the work we do with our primary care mental health. We currently have an EPR or electronic patient record, which is built in-house. And we're actually transferring that to a new electronic patient record called Rio. We've done the first tranche of that for older adults and we will be completing for the rest of the trust in the coming year. The other thing as well is that we also use something for our Sheffield Talking Therapies, we use something called Iaptus, which is a specific system that's been set up for those types of services. What we're building in to the implementation of the Rio system throughout the trust is the interoperability, so that notion actually that we can connect the systems, which was quite similar to what Sheffield Teaching Hospital talked about earlier. So that's one of our priority work plan to make sure that we've got that connectivity. It is a limitation at the moment, but depending on the service, people have access to all of those systems, depending on what type of work that they're doing. But as I said, within the next year or so, we'll have that connectivity.
Can I just add something? I think the difficulty is that there isn't one system that meets our mental health population. So some of the other systems, and I've used a few of those systems, are not necessarily the best system for, you know, recording around mental health care. So in terms of the system we've got, it's built much better to work with supporting people who've got mental health difficulties than some of the systems that are more physical health focused. But as Neil said, that interoperability, I think, is the key aspect of how we work with the different systems.
Yeah, I think, you know, people might not just have mental health issues, they might have other physical issues or, which are on different systems and there's a sort of risk there that a clinician might not pick up something which is important to, sort of, might have an influence on the current situation with that patient. And I just feel as a, having lots of systems which a clinician has to access to then get a full picture allows for mistakes to be made.
And I think that that's a really important point and is something that we are thinking about from a risk mitigation perspective. We're pleased with moving in the direction around Rio because as I said, it will give a much better connectivity in terms of how we work with our partners going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was good to hear about your quality objectives for the next three years. I just wondered, it sounded really well thought out, what you're going to do, but I just wondered if you could tell us a little bit about how you decide on those objectives, what sort of makes the cut really, and whether you involve service users and lived experience in making that decision?
So we do, we look at what the national priorities are. So what's sort of happening, what's happening nationally. And we then consult with some of our stakeholder groups. So we would, you know, contact our commissioners and understand from their perspective what their priority areas are. We talk to our council of governors and find out from the, sort of, our elected members there, what their priorities are. And then we've taken them to some stakeholder groups or some service user network groups internally, where to try to canvass as many views. Obviously, we, it's difficult to go in with a blank piece of paper because you can't be everything to everybody and pick up everybody's sort of senses of needs and what their priority areas are. But we took a range of priorities and then we whittled them down to sort of, to pick up what the key priorities are. There's always more that we could always add. But obviously, you know, we try to focus them on a smaller number to give a better impact and a greater impact and outcome for the people that use our services. So yeah, we have consulted for probably about four months on them.
That's great, thank you. I think I'd like to comment about co-production and involvement and how it does seem, it seems to come across quite strongly embedded in the improvement work that's happened over the last recent years. And then continuing to read through the report into the new quality improvement priorities, I just thought maybe it became less apparent how involvement and co-production might work in some of those areas, particularly in the sexual safety and dementia priorities. It was just less apparent. I'm going to make the assumption that it's still there as it was set as a, you know, that whole area was set as a quality improvement previously and you've clearly done so much work on that and set up structures that allow, you know, quite open involvement and monitoring and co-production. But can you just comment on how that is likely to work in these new objectives, particularly in the sexual safety and dementia?
Yeah, I'll just add a comment. It's, I think, because we only had limited time. And as you say, our co-production approach is really embedded. We haven't focused on that particularly with the presentation. However, it is really embedded in the work that we do. So for example, with the sexual safety work, I have somebody with lived experience of using our services who's extremely passionate about sexual safety and she is involved in all aspects, even down to the way that we word things and put things on ward and obviously has very kind of, at times, slight differences in priority around what she sees and we take those into account. But we also work really closely with our co-production colleagues, our peer support workers, people in our community organisations. We've got cultural advocates on the wards, for example, as well. And we look at information across all those different areas and how we involve people because obviously it's not a one-size-fits-all approach to sexual safety. It's really important that we have that sort of intersectional look based on different groups of people. And it's the same with our dementia approach as well. And I suppose one thing that we didn't say, particularly in terms of dementia, is how we work with our carers. And we've got the triangle of accreditation, which we're really pleased about. And we work really closely with our carers group and we've got a really established engagement team as well who work with those communities and feedback. And so, yeah, it is very embedded. Thank you.
And if I could just add from an organisational perspective, we have an enabling strategy around engagement and co-production. So that's about how we have the golden thread through whatever we're changing, whether it's services, whether it's particular improvements around quality or whether it's improvement around our estate. And that's the golden thread of which we change and transform.
Thank you. I thought as well the honesty about restraint practices and restrictive practices was quite, I thought it was quite refreshing to see that level of honesty, especially around acknowledging where there's been deficiencies in relation to treatment of people from culturally and racially diverse backgrounds. I thought it was really positive to see that transparency in the report also around recording of race and ethnicity, which you mentioned in the presentation. So I think that that level of transparency is really welcome and really helpful to members of the public as well. So I'd really, you know, encourage more of that as well, I think. My other questions were around board visits and culture and quality visits. So on the board visits, just really briefly, who do they meet when they visit? It's not quite clear how our staff and service users selected.
So with the board visits, we will identify a service and then the service will decide on who actually the best people to talk to because it's about them giving an opportunity to talk about what they're proud of, but also as well what their challenges are. So we always try to include service users and carers as part of those visits as well. So it's two, one non-executive director, one executive director, and one of us will split working with service users and carers and then the other person will be engaging with the staff.
So obviously it's not possible for them to speak to everybody across the board, is it? So there's some sort of selection process for who will be? Do you, I mean, do you feel there's any risk of valuable information not being heard on those visits by dint of it being a selected cohort of people that they speak to? Should it be more open, do you think? Should there be more of an open invite to people to have the chance to speak to them?
I mean, it's certainly something that we can explore and check around the fact that, you know, I mean, people, there is always a risk, isn't there? That people are going to put forward people that have had a really, really positive experience. What we try to do though is that when we're thinking about the services, we try to triangulate that with other bits of information. So for example, complaints, serious incidents, those sorts of things would also be the indicators that we'd be looking at. So we wouldn't just be taking assurance from that visit. We'd be looking at other information to make sure that we are getting that view. And I think that with the culture and quality visits as well, that's quite an intensive assessment process that people really do engage with. And my experience of a workforce and one thing I'm particularly proud of is that they are very committed to articulating what needs to improve and what support they need.
Lovely, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Oh, I did just want to ask about the, we're all aware that there's been a budget cut to the ICB in the last year, 30% cut to their kind of operational budget. I just wanted to hear whether that's had any impact, was likely to have any impact on, for example, the quality of co-production work that you're able to do and the development of that kind of work?
I, there isn't from my perspective. I mean, we're very fortunate that the ICB in Sheffield do commission Rethink to support, to deliver or to provide experts by experience. So for example, today we're having a peer review of mental health discharge in conjunction with the council. And we are using experts by experience to contribute to that peer review, who have come from Rethink. So that there is that clear commitment, I think, from Sheffield Place around the importance of co-production.
Thank you. Right, I'll hand over to you, Deb, for a brief summary, if you would.
Thank you. I'm hoping I've got most of it. Obviously, the question, the first question was around the compatibility of the electronic patient records. I've noted that you have three different systems that you use. One is the System One around mental health services. You've got an in-house electronic patient record system, which is transferring across to a new one called Rio. And that you also use Iaptus, which is used for talking therapies. Yep. And that Rio, the aim is for Rio to have interconnectivity across the systems. But the complexity around the fact that there isn't currently one system that meets all your needs. Determining objectives for the forthcoming year, you work on national priorities and then a four-month consultation process, which includes stakeholders, commissioners, governors, elected members. And it's based on co-production. Oh no, sorry, I've got the two questions merged together. So that was that one. Then there was another one on co-production, which you talked about being well embedded. There was concern expressed that maybe that wasn't as apparent as it had been in the past. And you reassured that it is still a priority. And you use the example of the work around sexual safety to show how embedded that work is. And you also talked about, and this is a bit that I'm not sure, enabling strategy? Is that right? Yeah. And the golden thread through all changes that you implement, which focus on involvement and engagement. We noted that the transparency that you demonstrate in the report is really, really important to members of the public and members are pleased to see this. Board visits, always try, you always try to include service users and carers as well as staff. There was concern expressed that the selection process might risk missing views out. You also, but you reassured around the triangulation of information with other performance information. And the final one was the budget cut to the ICB and whether this had an impact on the quality of co-production work. You used the example of the commissioning of Rethink via the ICB. And you gave an example, was it peer review of mental health discharge? Have I got that right? Yeah. That's it.
Are we happy, members, for Deborah to take that away and summarise to some feedback? I think that's it, yeah, on that one? Okay, thank you very much and thank you for attending and for explaining and answering questions. Much appreciated. Finally, we have the St Luke's Hospice Quality Report. Sorry to make you wait till the end. Quick changeover of personnel again. Right, lovely. Welcome to, two of you, Louise and Jo. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and the role that you have within the organisation, then you've got a presentation for us, haven't you? Thank you.
Okay, good morning. I'm Jo Lent and I'm Chief Nurse and Director of Care.
Hi, I'm Louise Bearden. I'm the Head of Clinical Governance. So yeah, thank you for inviting us here today to talk through our St Luke's Quality Account for 2024. We just have a few short slides to run through and Jo and myself will be sort of alternating as we go through. So first couple of slides basically outline the structure of the quality account this year. So we have a statement from our chief executive on the quality and on the governance of the charity. Obviously, St Luke's is primarily an organisation that provides palliative and end-of-life care to the communities of people who live in Sheffield. So that's both within the hospice itself, through some of our outreach work and into patients' homes in the community. It's also a charitable organisation, so we have a number of retail outlets and shops. We have a staff lottery, not a staff lottery, a lottery, a regional lottery. So it's quite a sort of complex organisation as well as providing healthcare. And the quality account goes through what our special focuses are for 2024 around our strategy, social prescribing, workforce and equality, diversity, inclusion. Reviews of performance of last year, so look at some of our services and activity, our relationship with CQC. So we are currently still an outstanding organisation and rated as outstanding by the CQC. Talk back about some of our continuous improvements through research and audit and what our ongoing priorities will be. Some skip forward to this. So Peter Hartland in his Key Messages talks about the growth in So Peter Hartland in his key messages talks about the growth in service users and complexity of St Luke's. So we, as I said, see people both in the hospice and in the community. And we are constantly trying to expand the offering that we have to those patients. There are demands on us from sort of the conditions that those patients present with. And we're noticing that as people have sort of more complex treatments for different conditions, that the complexity of their conditions has an increased demand on some of the services that they require to support them to live well with their disease. There are some financial challenges and Jo will go into those a little bit more. Some of the positives are around some of our income generation from Project Echo. So that talks about... Project Echo, if you've not heard of it, is a worldwide movement around learning and how we can share good practice. And there's a community of practice around learning, an extension of community outcomes for that. System One, I know we've talked a lot about Systems Today, but that's our move to an electronic patient record that will help to communicate with other community services within Sheffield, including GPs and district nurses. And there's also some changes to our board and chief executive that are planned from last year and into next year.
Hand over to Jo for her strategy. Just to touch on the point about the changes of the board, we've had a new chair. He joined us in December and also our Chief Exec, Peter Hartland, is due to leave the organisation, actually today is his last day. Just to go through some of the special focuses of our new strategy, which we are due to implement later this year when we've got a new incoming Chief Executive. This new strategy has been developed in line with also local and also national priorities. So this just really gives you a snapshot of what our priorities are. So just to go through a couple to give you a bit of context, when we're talking about improving our care, we're looking at how we're going to address the needs of the growing demands in palliative and end-of-life care. And that could be about making our services more accessible 24/7, looking at virtual ward concepts and also addressing health inequalities. Reaching further is looking at how we can support people out in the community, taking some of our social prescribing activities, our unregulated activities out into the community, looking at care and support, growing our research programme to include national but also international programmes. And we've also been doing some work with Hospice Africa and Global Cancer Care. Valuing our people, talks a lot about welfare of our staff and our workforce and making sure that we are actually preparing them to care for people at end of life and developing our learning and development strategy. Embracing new thinking is about innovation and that goes hand in hand with some of the research that we're doing. Looking at AI and also looking at environmental developments. Championing our cause is looking at our branding and marketing, looking at ways that we can increase our awareness, looking at ways that we can work in collaboration. We work at the moment with Compassionate Cities and having more roadshow events. Sustaining growth is around looking at our financial aims and looking at how we can expand and looking at different ways we can diversify our income. So social prescribing, this is one of our unregulated activities that we have developed and grown since the pandemic. This is based at our Ecosor Road site, just above Little Common Lane. It's a service that we offer to people. And what we're trying to do is identify people a lot earlier within their diagnosis and come and join this service. This is a referral process to get into the service that people... Although people can self-refer, we deliver over 40 activities. And that's things ranging from social work advice and support, IT advice and support. It could be chair dancing, it could be African drumming. We do lots and lots of different things, gardening, lots and lots of different activities, cooking. Last year, the figures show all the attendances that we have and that is growing each month. We're having a lot more new referrals. It's mainly a volunteer-led service, which enhances the volunteers as well. We do offer some transport to and from the services. We have a very established bereavement service at Ecosor Road South. We deliver one-to-one bereavement or we deliver group sessions or we also deliver volunteer. At the moment, that is also only for patients and families who come through St Luke's services. One of our new initiatives this year is also addressing bereavement for children and young people. Because we recognise there's a gap in services. We do a lot of collaborative working up at Ecosor Road South. We work in partnership with the MND Society and also Age UK in delivering a dementia cafe.
So workforce, wellbeing and quality diversity and inclusion, it's a really big focus for us this year. So obviously recognising the needs of people who come to work at St Luke's, both as healthcare professionals but also in sort of the demanding kind of setting that end-of-life and palliative care brings. So we do support staff with mental health first aiders. Staff have supervision, which helps them to deal with some of the sort of difficult cases that they face. And that just isn't our clinical staff, it's some of our support staff as well. So people such as porters and housekeepers who form quite close relationships with those patients. We have an EDI advisor who started with us in post last year and they're working very hard to sort of integrate some sort of key theme weeks across St Luke's. So we do things like Race Equality Week, working with some groups around women's health, menopause, Men's Health Week. So we do have focused weeks of activities. We conduct staff surveys and regular pulse checks with staff. So these sometimes have a wellbeing element to them or look more at sort of spot checks on how staff are feeling. And they've been, you know, to say they're quite new, the uptake in those has been quite high. We've had about a... 90% of people think that, you know, St Luke's is a very fair and equitable place to work. But they do believe that, you know, we could have a more diverse workforce and we are working hard at that. We have a comprehensive wellbeing programme and, as I say, mental health first aiders help support with that. So we do things like lunchtime walks and help staff with benefits.
Service activity. Last year, St Luke's received over 2,324 referrals across all our three main services. This is an increase from the previous year. 33% of our patients now that we actually care for have a non-cancer diagnosis. We have a 20-bedded inpatient unit and also we have quite a large community team where we are caring for over 400 patients out in the community at any one time. Last year, we managed to deliver 6,500 community visits. A part of the community service, we do have a rapid response service, which is same-day, next-day visiting service. And that was introduced several years ago. That service has been invaluable to help avoid acute hospital admissions. I think this rapid response service alone delivered 1,600 visits last year. The Inpatient Centre, we looked after just under 300 patients as inpatients last year. Our average length of stay at the moment for the Inpatient Centre is up to 16 days. But it can be a lot longer depending on the complexity. And actually, a third of our patients who do come into the Inpatient Centre do actually go home. Finances for hospice funding is quite a topical subject at the moment. We receive only 25% of our funding from the ICB, which towards the end of this year, next year, we will be looking at discussing our new contract going forward. At this point, we don't know how the funding will look going forward. Last year, we made a loss of £400,000. It would have been greater if it wasn't for a one-off payment from the ICB of half a million towards looking after more complex care. This year, we have also set a deficit of half a million. On the flip side, we are looking at different ways that we can income generate. We are looking at opening new shops. We've got a new one, opening in Kellner Way Retail Park, which is planned for later this year, early next year. So one of the areas that we have developed is research and audit. We are actually delivering a research conference, our first research conference, around how to introduce research into hospices and that will take place in Sheffield in October. The research team are attracting a lot of quality workforce from across all disciplines. We don't only see the workforce as an opportunity to look at how we can improve and develop our services. But we're also looking at it from a workforce initiative about how we can attract different workforce into our services.
Yeah, so just around audit, we obviously have audits set nationally from Hospice UK and we do sort of emulate some of the audit work from the NHS. But we have our own sort of delivery programme as well on audit that then feeds into quality improvement projects. And some of those are included in the quality account. So I can just touch on the quality priorities. So from last year, it was a focus on System One as an integrated electronic patient record. So we're on track for rolling that out in September this year. And we will be carrying that through into our priorities for 24 and 25. Because obviously for a small organisation, this is quite a big project and a lot of time and effort has gone into making sure that we get this right.
Just to add, we are currently, we've got two systems. We've got a paper-based system, which we use on the Inpatient Centre, an electronic version that we use on the community. The reason why we decided to build and deliver System One is the majority of our caseload is actually out in primary care. So we'll have that integration with the primary care services. We are part of a digital group working with Sheffield Teaching Hospital, their palliative and end-of-life services about how we can share those patient records. So I know they're introducing a different EPR. They will be looking at introducing System One solely into their palliative and end-of-life care services so they can have access to our information.
And then the next priority is around the Patient Safety Incident Response Framework. So this will replace the previous NHS Serious Incident Framework. And this looks at how you respond to anything related to patient safety. So it's mainly built around incident management. But this could also be information from audits, information we gleaned from complaints. And it looks at more of a systems-based approach into trying to find out what are the sort of multifactorial causes into why harm might occur or near misses might occur. So it takes a systems-based approach and we look at learning and improvement and how we communicate that meaningful change across the organisation. We try and engage families and patients as much as possible in that process. So that talks again about meaningful engagement beyond just the statutory duty of candour and how we maintain oversight. So the ICB have worked quite closely with us on this and agreed our piece of plans and priorities. We've also worked with other hospices in the region to try and benchmark and make sure that we're all aligned. And also our Board of Trustees helped with the oversight process for this as well. So other areas of quality, look at around our incident management system and how we go on to develop that. We haven't had any serious incidents in St Luke's hospice last year. We employ an infection control lead nurse who oversees the assurance and management of all infection control activities, both at the hospice and in the community. And he's actually the lead for the Yorkshire Infection Control. So we try and reach out as much as we can so that we don't stand as very much a standalone organisation in that field. We work on education of staff, so like I said before, through clinical supervision, things like journal club mandatory training and involving them also in things like research. In terms of complaints, we only had three clinical complaints last year and that was compared to six in the prior year. Only one of those was partially upheld and we were able to respond to. We had 446 compliments from our patients and that comes in through, well, and their families. But that can come in through our website, through cards or through some of the feedback activities that we carry out through patient experience. We have a high level of patient satisfaction at St Luke's, but we're always looking to try and improve either our services or our offering or our environments. So we do collect feedback through various mechanisms and that's by using volunteers in person or it's using questionnaires, codes on the internet. Or we do things such as the 15 steps, where we invite service users and their families in to go around various areas within St Luke's so we can see what they see through their eyes and get that feedback. And that helps us to co-design some of our services. And then also in terms of developments, we're looking at a family suite on the Inpatient Centre. So I don't know, Jo, you want to say something about the family suite?
I think we've recognised within the St Luke's that we needed a different space for families. So we're combining one of the adjoining rooms so we can have an open door between the two. So it's a space where it's a bit more self-contained. I think the reason why we're doing this is not only for to look after families at end of life, we're going to use it for enablement work as well because it has what I call a normal bath in a kitchen area where patients can practise their home skills before they go home. And also some of the work that we are involved in is a transition around looking at how we can support young adults and families. And this suite, because we're having track hoists in which we've not had before, that will hopefully help address the transition piece of work that we're looking at. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments and questions from members? Toby?
You might be aware, I've been asking about the patient record systems of different trusts. It's interesting to note that all the other trusts are moving, seem to be moving away from System One or not using it, other than in small areas under their remits. But you're moving towards it in the hope of being able to transfer records in, presumably they'll have access more easily. Which is a bit, in my mind, if the others that aren't using it, that's going to might be a problem. It's only work that's been done to try and... I don't know, do you have access to these other systems that are being used? Or, you know, because obviously it fits the objective if everyone's using a different system.
We, because most of our caseload, the 400 patients around the community, we made a conscious decision to move towards System One to give those the access where GPs, district nurses can have access to our information. We are part of a digital working group within the trust about looking at how different systems can integrate. So those discussions are still taking place at the moment. I know from the working group, the Palliative and End-of-Life Services will have access to System One, which will allow access to our records. But I'm not sure if I'm being honest about the emergency care services, whether they will have access or not.
Thanks. Maybe it's not a question for you, but is it a role for the ICB to try and ensure that there's some consistency across all of these providers in terms of patient records?
Possibly.
Did you want to speak, Laura?
Just be brief, in case more time is getting on. But just in both your report and your presentation, you acknowledge that St Luke's, like many other hospices, are sort of routinely budgeting for annual deficits. And, you know, the rest of your report tells us the amazing work that you're doing and the large numbers of people that are passing through your doors and your services. And they're clearly committed to sort of providing a high level of care in the face of that budget. I just thought it's worth acknowledging that and commenting on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's very much worth acknowledging that and that there's... It seems sort of reading between the lines in your report this year and last year when we saw your report, that there's just not a parity of esteem. Maybe that's something we'd really like to see, you know, work better for you in the future. But without going into too much, you know, detail around how that might work. It's, I think, parity of esteem for hospice care. parity of esteem for hospice care is perhaps just not quite there. Having said that, you know, you're innovating on a whole load of fronts, you know, despite, maybe, despite that. I think it's brilliant to see the new emerging strategy for 24 to 28 continuing to uphold everything that you're already doing. I don't know if that felt like a risky decision or whether it would feel more risky to drop anything from the range of services that you provide, but it must, you know, it must have taken a bit of courage to decide that that was the way to go forward when you're working on a deficit budget. So I would applaud that and agree that there's nothing really that you could cut out of the range of services that would not have an immediate detrimental effect. So I would commend that. And I think the continued focus on social prescribing, which of course we highlighted last year is a, you know, a huge benefit. I think that's particularly welcome and for me, that's an indicator of how you're really enacting that compassionate, compassionate care. That looks after the whole person and really, you know, prioritising quality of life right to the end of life. I think that's really significant and a really key part of healthcare in the city. So thank you for that. I think as well, as you're a founding partner in Compassionate Sheffield, you know, we have scrutinised the emerging South Yorkshire end-of-life palliative care strategy. That was, you know, members wanted to bring that into this scrutiny committee and look very carefully at how that strategy was emerging. And we did highlight, you know, that Compassionate Sheffield had an awful lot to offer and that we would have liked to see more of that coming into that strategy. And I think actually, we haven't seen the final strategy report, but I think that end-of-life strategy does now include a whole lot more of that Compassionate Sheffield priorities. So I think that's really excellent. I would also want to sort of commend the research activity and the commitment to keeping that front and centre, which because it really enables all that knowledge transfer, doesn't it, and best practice transfer. And the fact that you're operating in that space nationally and internationally, I think is really outstanding. So I think that's worth mention as well. Anything else from members? Okay, Debra, if you would summarise again for us, please.
Thanks Chair. As with all the other three reports, the-
Sorry, just before you do, apologies, there was one really key thing, just the readability of this. So printed for us on A4, it's miniscule, way beyond my sight capacity at my age. And reading on screen, it was a lot of scrolling to and fro and very small text. So just a little point for future publications, that this was really hard to read physically.
Yeah, I went back to our cons department and it's when it's printed, I've got one in my bag, it's actually printed as sort of A4 to A4. So when it's on the website, the accessibility tools will make it so that it's, yeah, appears like that. Whereas I think because you've printed it from a printer, it comes out all squashed up and half the page.
It's in our PDF pack and it's there as a double page spread, so it'd be really tiny. Just a little note for future, thanks.
Thank you.
But it is also really hard to read on the screen because you have to go start to start the copy of the slides.
I think Joanne's got them, yeah.
Thank you. As I was saying, the electronic patient records question was asked to all four of the presentations today. And you confirmed that you'd made a positive decision to move towards system one. And the issue of whether there was a role for the ICB in ensuring consistency across EPRs and their systems was raised. It was also raised that the recognition of kind of funding issues and annual deficits making it harder for the trust and a desire for a parity of esteem for hospice care as something for the future. But wanted to point out that despite this, you'd made obviously a brave decision to not cut anything and that you were innovating still despite this and continuing to hold uphold progress and that the committee supports that. The reference to social prescribing, again, the committee is very pleased to see that and commented that they're looking forward to work more on that with you in the future. They also recognise you as a founding partner in Compassionate Sheffield. This scrutiny committee looked at the end-of-life strategy last year and as a result of that recommended more involvement of Compassionate Sheffield and their priorities. And the committee also commends your work around research activity and knowledge transfer. And obviously there was a final comment about the layout of the document.
Okay, everyone happy with that summary? Thank you. Good. Just to say, Debra, when you write those up, all those summaries, we're just double checking that the name of this super committee is correct on each of the four reports. I did notice one or two stuff have it as Healthier Communities, et cetera, committee was its old name. Toby?
I'm just aware that we didn't pull out the positives from the children's report. Did we? Or did we? One I raised was that there's a patient on the board or patient representatives on the board, but-
We'll just come back to that and check, Toby.
It'd be a bit of a mission if there's visitors everywhere except for the children.
In the meantime, thank you very much Louise and Jo for attending today and for your contribution and clear presentation. Thank you very much indeed. We'll just quickly check that point, Toby, before we finalise all of that. What specific point was it?
The point that I raised was that I was very pleased to see a patient on the board or a patient representative on the board.
Sorry, I can't see a reference to that in the summary that I pulled together during the discussion, so I can add that in if the committee wants me to.
If there's any other positives, surely were, but I can't, I'm throwing my head and remember, maybe it's too late to do that. It doesn't matter really, does it?
Great, we'll just slot that in. Thank you, Toby. Okey dokey, we have our work programme to consider, just again being mindful that discussion around this is also under our pre-election period restrictions. So we're just being a little bit careful not to stray into political territory or anything that is subject to debate under the current general election. Debra?
I just wanted to point out that on the work programme document that circulated with the report, there is a slight mistake. I didn't remove an item. For the December meeting, I've still got an item from last year in there, I don't know, on sexual health. I don't know, I didn't quite manage to delete that properly, so I apologise for that. That needs to come out of the document.
Anything on the work programme? Colleagues?
I just wondered whether we should add into the work programme considering the long Covid rehabilitation hubbing clinic, because obviously that's a relatively new service in the last few years and quite a crucial service at the moment and whether it'd be worth scrutinising that.
Other members' opinions on that? Would we be happy to bring that into the work programme? So we would ask for a report on how that service has rolled out and what the outcomes are so far?
Yeah, outcomes, waiting times, that kind of thing, yeah. You know, they've got enough capacity to deal with the demand, yeah.
Okay. Debra, can you look into how we might pursue that, please? Anything else?
There probably has already been discussion about this, maybe this might not be suitable, but there's certainly quite a lot that I picked up last year about waiting times for not autism, ADHD assessments for adults and things. Is that covered? Or is it in there? All right, apologies.
In September.
I raised it at the meeting in December last year. And then it's, there's been various difficulties with it, but it's on the agenda for the September meeting.
On that item, we're also planning to run a workshop in July prior to the report coming in September.
Just coming out of the Sheffield Teaching Hospitals quality account today, I did wonder whether we might look a bit further at wait times, particularly around the 18-week target for outpatient and admissions, because those figures aren't particularly encouraging, I thought, in the report. And I wondered whether we might want to just look a bit further into that on a local footing and what plans there are in place to improve on that? I don't know if that's worth us bringing in. Yes, no?
Yeah. I mean, are we going to talk about the issues now or do, I mean, we thought we're having a separate thing because I was thinking, you know, also is there a possibility of looking at the Yorkshire ambulance service and the waiting times with the ambulance, you know?
Maybe that's something to look at in conjunction then, as that's all around patient pathways, patient flows, admission discharge, wait times. Would we want to ask for a report from Sheffield Teaching Hospitals and Yorkshire Ambulance side by side, do you think?
I think so because obviously it's not mutually exclusive. The waiting times for ambulances are directly impacted by waiting times at A and E. So I think that that would be prudent to have them side by side.
Yeah, I think it's important to have in that because we haven't, we haven't really had that as, to scrutinise previously, the whole issue about ambulance waiting times, but a part of that, but yeah, I'm happy with that.
Okay, so Debra, I think that's around, so urgent care, wait times and admissions, ambulance services in connection with that. And then there's the slightly longer term 18-week waits for either admission to hospital for treatment or to begin outpatient treatment. Toby?
Just another idea for another one, you did pick up-
Just wondering whether we're out of time. Carry on.
Very quickly, you did pick up about some of the disturbing looking cancer percentages going down the wrong way, you know, cancer treatment at the hospitals' trust. Is it worth looking more deeply into that?
So that is being looked at more broadly at South Yorkshire level. So there's a South Yorkshire ambassador law scrutiny committee as well, which has directly been looking at some of the issues in cancer care system-wide in South Yorkshire. So I think that probably sits under that, under that more footprint-wide scrutiny level. But please feed in any lines of inquiry or concerns that you have. Please feed that in via email, Debra and myself, because that conversation is happening separately from this committee, but it's not, it's, the South Yorkshire committee isn't one that oversees the others, it's just a separate entity. So the scrutiny committees from each place feeding into those discussions is really important. So by all means, please, please do contribute that way.
Thanks.
Okay, I think we're just about out of time. Digital clock doesn't align with the town hall clock. Are there any further comments about the work programme at this stage? Okay, and I think that brings us to the end of our business for today. Thank you very much for remaining compliant. It wasn't necessary for Andrea to speak at all, so I think that's a success. So for managing the situation of holding this type of meeting in a restricted period. So well done us. Thank you. See you next time.